At 7:28, trustee Powers will be kind enough to call the roll.
Yes, sir. John DeGrace.
Present.
John Dershowitz. George Gordon.
Present.
Linda Green.
Present.
Wanda Jackson. Andrew Powers, present. George Cimberon.
Present.
Donna Sibylle.
Present.
Kathy Weiss.
Present.
Alex Figueroa.
Present.
We have a call.
Thanks, sir. I'm going to ask, do you have a motion to approve the April 9, 2019 minutes?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carries. All right, trustee West, did you come up?
Sure. Resolve that the Nassau Community College Board of Trustees hereby approves an operating budget for the fiscal year commencing September 1, 2019 in the amount of $204,115,013 and be it further resolved that the Nassau Community College Board of Trustees recommends the adoption of the college operating budget by the Nassau County Legislature and the Board of Trustees at the State University of New York.
Do I have a motion to consider this item?
So moved.
Okay, I'll have trustee Weiss, and then trustee Green with a second. Is there any further discussion? Are there being none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Any abstention? Motion carries eight zero. Trustee Green, would you be kind enough to read the next motion?
Thank you, surely. Tuition and fee schedule for 2019 through 2020, resolve that the Nassau Community College Board of Trustees establishes a tuition and fee schedule to be effective for the academic year 2019-2020 whereby there shall be an annual increase of $250 in full-time tuition and $11 per credit and part-time tuition commencing with the fall 2019 semester. In addition, there shall be an increase in the applied music fee to $400 per semester from $200 per semester commencing with the fall 2019 semester. In addition, there shall be an increase in the one-time admissions application fee to $55 from $50 commencing September 1, 2019. In addition, there shall be an elimination of the re-admit processing fee of $25 commencing September 1, 2019. In addition, there shall be an increase in the late registration fee to $30 from $25 commencing with the fall 2019 semester. Further resolve that this tuition and fee schedule be forwarded to the State University of New York for approval.
Do I have a motion to consider this item?
I make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero. Trustee Figueroa, would you be kind enough to read the next motion?
Yeah, resolved, or...
Here for yourself.
All right. Upon the recommendation of the Nassau Community College Board of Trustees, personnel affirmative action and neighbor committee, the Nassau Community College Board of Trustees hereby approves that pursuant to the terms of the faculty collective bargaining agreement and upon the recommendation of the college-wide promotion and tenure committee and the college administration, the faculty members named here and hereby promoted to the title and position as indicated herein effective September 1, 2019.
Read the names, sir.
Read the beginning, promotion to full professor. Janine Ferraro, Criminal Justice Department.
Allison Bresmer, Department of Critical Reading and Academic Advancement. Kim Blarini for English. Susan Cushman for English. Donna M. Hope for Marketing. Rachel Rojas for Math, Computer Science and IT. Gary Ostereck for Philosophy. And David Stern for Physical Science.
Woo!
Promotion to Associate Professor. Shanee Bruno, Africana Studies. Deirdre O'Connor, Communications. Catherine Cho, Criminal Justice.
Do I have a motion to consider this item?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I do.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Any abstention? Motion carries eight zero. Now you can applaud.
Now.
Okay, I'm going to go to Policy and Planning. I'm going to do a second reading of Policy 7500, Building and Program Naming. This is the second reading of Policy 7500 of the Board of Trustees' Policy Manual. The draft policy has been posted on the board's webpage. Trustee Weiss.
This policy has been discussed. This is the second time. We first discussed it at the committee level. This has to do with the naming of buildings and programs. And I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board, or if Dr. Keen wants to add anything.
I don't need to add anything except to say that I think it will serve the college well in terms of both recognizing people who need to be recognized and in the process helping the college with its fundraising efforts.
All right. We're going to do a second reading of Policy 7510, Plaque Recognition, of the Board of Trustees' Policy Manual. The draft policy is posted on the board's webpage. Trustee Weiss.
And again, similar to the other one, we discussed this at the committee level, and this is the second time we bring that to the board about plaque recognition, and the policy is very specific about the process that has to take place. So are there any questions from members of the board, or Dr. Keen?
I would like to say that it provides a formal way, a kind of a formal procedure, by which we can recognize individuals who are departed from the college, either through retirement or who have perhaps become deceased while in office. And we need to be able to do that, and this does not necessarily have any monetary contribution associated with it. I think it's a policy that will provide an organized process for doing this.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to make a motion of the Article 8, Section C6 of the board's rules of procedure, which will allow for the consideration of three items that did not appear on the calendar.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm sorry, was there anybody against? Any abstention? Motion carries eight zero. Okay. Trustee Powers, would you be kind enough to read Policy 7510?
Resolve that upon the recommendation of the Policy and Planning Committee at its meeting of January 8, 2019, followed by two readings of the policy by the Board of Trustees in public discussion, the Board of Trustees of Nassau Community College adopts the Policy 7500, Building and Program Naming, and that the same be subsequently incorporated into the policy manual of the Board of Trustees of Nassau Community College.
Do I have a motion to consider this item?
I make the motion.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Any abstention? Motion carries eight zero.
Just one comment, Mr. Chairman. Those are people that were present when we did the Capitol meeting today, and there was a quick discussion about Suffolk Community College allowing the Suffolk Federal Credit Union, I hope I'm saying that right, Ed, to name buildings for 1.9 million. In this policy, the minimum amount is 1 million or more, depending on the particular building and its size and purpose, as opposed to what we heard could be multiple places on another campus for a lot less money, so.
Lovely. All right. Trustee Green, would you be kind enough to read Policy 7510?
Resolve that upon the recommendation of the Policy and Planning Committee at its meeting of January 8, 2019, followed by two readings of the policy by the Board of Trustees in public discussion, the Board of Trustees of Nassau Community College adopts Policy 7510, Plaque Recognition, and that the same be subsequently incorporated into the policy manual of the Board of Trustees of Nassau Community College.
Do I have a motion to consider this item?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero. Trustee Weiss, would you be kind enough to...
Yes, I would. Resolve that the Board of Trustees of Nassau Community College herewith rejects the fact finding recommendations contained in the fact finding report and recommends issued by Dennis Campagna Esquire dated May 1, 2019.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to consider this item?
I make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero. All right. I'm going to take a moment before we go to the report, the president. I'd like to take a moment to recognize one of the members of the Board of Trustees, and that is our student trustee.
Yay!
Alex Figueroa. This is Alex's last night here with us on the Board of Trustees.
He's so happy.
He is going to miss the excitement, camaraderie, the spirited discussion, and the intricacies involved with working with such a fine group of faculty, students, and being able to understand firsthand the knowledge that he's been able to ascertain here at Nassau Community College. So, on behalf of the Nassau Board of Trustees, the President of Nassau Community College, I'm pleased to award this recognition of outstanding service to Alex Figueroa. Very good. Okay, I'm going to pass this on to the fourth member.
I saw that we had a very busy...
We're going to get our next motion.
I was going to say, our future trustee is sitting in the audience, so I just wish that we want to recognize Bridgette Russell.
We've had a very busy two or three weeks here, including the Student Government Association elections. We have new officers now, including the new Board of Trustees member, Bridget Russell, who is here with us today. She's getting an early start in sitting into the board. But the name perhaps will ring a bell for you. Her sister served, her sister Therese Russell, served as the student trustee in the previous year, and so...
And when Therese was on the board, she said, "I'm going to get my sister to do this."
Totally.
We've also, just this morning, had the last Academic Senate meeting of the year, in which they also elected officers for the next terms. And Professor Anissa Moore, who is also here tonight, was elected by acclamation as the president for a new term. It's been a great professional experience for me, rewarding experience, to work with the Academic Senate and the Student Government Association during these times that I've been here. Two very important governance organizations, so congratulations. I've been working, I've been working with the administration to conclude on a number of projects, as many projects as possible, in advance of Dr. Williams assuming the office of the president. And I'm in regular communication with him, with Dr. Williams, because we've come to the point where I did not want to make any significant decision or take any significant action without his being informed about it, and so I am consulting with him on a regular basis and will continue to do so until he takes office on July 1. And as I said this morning, I will go into rehab at that time. Also, will be in halfway house for a month.
We will stop your valuing trip, don't worry about it.
So, we're working on a number of things, and what is, we've been examining, working with the Center for Excellence in Innovation in Education for a few months. They administer over $2 million in grants for projects that are very important for our partners in the public school. In one sense, they are service projects, but they are funded by state and federal government funding. On the other hand, they are also projects that help tremendously with these schools and with the students in the public schools that they work with. These are important projects, and so we want to conclude with an organization for the Center for Excellence as we go forward. We've been working on a set of procedures for administering grants that come from outside agencies. We need to make sure that they are administered consistent with our operating procedures, and we had our most recent meeting this morning. I think we might conclude, I hope we can conclude, the procedures in time that Dr. Williams doesn't have to take it up with a continuation of the work. But it's important to get that because grants are different from our normal operations, and they need to be considered with respect to how to administer them. We are also charged by SUNY, but also by our necessity that we have policies on security of data and computer systems. And so, we are now taking a look at how we're handling computer security to make sure that we've got the organization in place and the responsibilities charged so that it will enable us to comply with policies, and the State University of New York's got a policy on this. But you also heard the auditor from RSM say earlier that next year, RSM will be examining the college for compliance with cybersecurity. And finally, we do have five key searches for personnel underway in the administration area, two in the area of marketing and communications, where we've ended up with essentially not very much staff, but we have reassigned responsibilities and we're carrying out work in those areas. But those two, I hope, will come to a conclusion soon. And then there are three searches for academic deans, which are progressing. And on all of these, I have assured Dr. Williams that I'll be consulting with him as they come to a conclusion in the next few weeks. That's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Keen. All right, we're going to go to the speakers list. First and foremost will be our esteemed colleague from NCCFT, Frank Persenda.
Hi, Frank Persenda, NCCFT. First, let me congratulate everybody who received their promotions, Associate Full Professor, great job. Boy, they threw you into the pit, right? Last, they read all the names. Did a good job, though. Okay, Alex.
No, he criticized me last time.
Oh, yeah, it was a loss on us. We know that when the reading of the names comes, it's usually an initiation for something. So, I just want to mention something. I've mentioned to you all year this initiative that we've taken on called Professor on Wheels. At the East Meadow Levertown Senior Center, we have had about eight faculty members have gone there and have given different lectures to the seniors. And today was graduation day for them, and the seniors, the bookstore was gracious enough to contribute caps and gowns for them, and Dr. Keen was there and performed the ceremony, okay, the graduation ceremony, and gave them all certificates. They had family members there, guests there. Laura Curran was there, Laura Gillian was there, a few other dignitaries were there. And I have to say that none of this, none of this would have been possible except for the heroic efforts of Don Hope, Professor Hope, sitting in the audience. When we first started this initiative, and first time we read the senior center talking to them, we had no idea where this was going to go, how it was going to culminate. But today, and Dr. Keen, you know, you could hold my feet to the fire on this, I mean, it was so emotional, all right? I mean, these, these, it was all women, by the way.
You don't want yourself...
And they, but they were so proud of themselves, okay? They had such a, it just, anyway, I just wanted to say, I appreciate all the support I've gotten from the college, from the faculty, and Donna, a great job, and I hope we can do it next year somewhere else and do it again. But I think this is, what's really nice about this is not only for the seniors, but for their families, okay, that they saw Nassau Community College and seen Nassau Community College in a different light, okay? So this is just a little thousand points of light, you know, that we're trying to move on with.
Thank you, Frank. All right. Our chairman from the AFA, Stefan Kopek.
First, I'd like to speak of two points of light, and actually, three points of light. Last Thursday, I had the opportunity to attend the Hispanic Brotherhood's Scholarship Awards. They also honored five, I believe it was five, people who made significant contributions to their organizations. Two of them were of our own. John DeGrace, trustee, and Dr. Cornbluth, Dean of Professional Studies. The best part of the evening was to listen to both gentlemen speak of Nassau Community College. How much they cared about the college and the students was apparent, and there were a number of students there and families there, and the impression that I'm sure that those people got will lead some of them to our college. So that was a very, very nice place for me to be. Dr. Gordon was there, too, and George Cimberon is a major part of that organization. First, last Monday, I was able to become a teacher again. I had a co-teacher share this experience with me, and it was a part of the Accounting and Business Department's Business Day in America. What they do is they invite speakers to come, teachers to come, and they talk on, we talk on different subject areas. My subject area was unions. And my co-teacher was the wonderful Frank Persenda. And he was, he was my co-teacher and I was his co-teacher. Something interesting happened to me as I walked out of the Academic Senate meeting today. A young man comes up to me and he says, "Are you Professor Crumpier?" And I said, "Yes." He said, "Well, I was at the presentation you made about unions, you and..." and he knew Dr. Frank's name. "I loved your presentation. You learned a lot about unions." So, another real good experience. Last but not least, I want to say, and I'm sure I'm going to see him again, so long to Dr. Keen. My mother says, "You don't say goodbye, you say so long." What comes to mind was an early meeting that I was at off-campus, and I was asked, "What do you think of Dr. Keen? What do you think about what he's doing at Nassau Community College?" He'd been here for about six months. And one name came to mind, Abraham Lincoln. I said, "Dr. Keen is the Abraham Lincoln of our college." And it was appropriate, and it still comes to mind when I think of him. And last but not least, as you know, we have an MOA agreed upon between us and the college due to the end of the semester, and we needed to put it out to our membership for ratification. On Saturday, we had a general membership meeting, about 150 members showed up. We answered questions for about two hours. We were finished. We all got a, the officers and the negotiating team got a standing ovation. And I think part of that had to do with the collegiality and the professionalism that we spoke about often in the negotiations, and we felt that we were able to get something positive done for both us and the college with those negotiations. Voting started today, it's electronically, electronic, we don't know who voted for whom, but we do know the numbers as of 7 o'clock, 257 for the MOA, 15 against. Thank you.
Last member on this list is Mr. David Stern from the Environmental Science Department. It's actually Tom. Dr. Stern, yes, thank you.
So, good evening. I came to speak tonight in response to the promotion vote for full professor and what it's meant to me. And I want to offer my gratitude to the NCC community for providing the environment and the opportunity to offer our students an education that's second to none. I brought with me an example of this excellence to share with the board. My time operating?
No.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
All right. So I've brought an example to share with the board. In the environmental science course that I teach, my students are required to conduct a semester-long observation where they recreate Thoreau's Walden Pond experiment. They must go to a natural area and observe nature for 10 weeks. They summarize their experience in a three-word essay. I created this project because it's the only true way to understand our natural world and how it connects with our inner souls. The only way to understand our natural world and how it connects to our inner souls is to spend some time with it. Accordingly, I have here the Marisa Gonzalez's work. It exemplifies what's happening inside NCC's classrooms. So what I'd like to do is just, I'm going to read just her log, and this is the actual log, right? So if you want to take a quick look at it, and I have just her three-word summary, I just want to quickly summarize to give you a sense of what she actually said. "For my second semester in the college, I decided to take Environmental 101. To be completely honest, of my favorite parts of the class was the Walden log. There were many times that I really enjoyed my alone time at my spot. I have never been the person to enjoy nature or anything like that. After doing these log entries, I think I found out why. I feel like humans nowadays don't know how to live. All my life, I felt uncomfortable or not really in the mood for something. I would tune the world out and live on my phone. I think that people need to look up once in a while. I can tell you that looking up was a beautiful experience. I found a lot of birds and saw a lot of things I wouldn't normally see on a day-to-day basis because I wouldn't be paying attention. In one of my logs, I got this great picture of two mallard ducks. To be honest, that picture was like the coolest picture I've ever taken. Watching these two mallard ducks in the water was super peaceful. I got really close to them, and they were not even bothered by my presence. They were beautiful and innocent, so carefree in the water. They don't have any distractions in their world, nothing to deter them from really enjoying life. They may not know it, but we know, we do, that it's the fact that we're probably living a more meaningful, they're probably living a more meaningful life than most humans. There's something I learned on my 10-week endeavor, besides the fact that it's obvious I love those ducks. I learned that I want to be more like those ducks. I want to look around and live life carefree without having to worry about social media, popularity, or anything like that. In today's world, we spend too much time striving for other people's acceptance, that we have forgotten how to accept ourselves. I think once people put down the camera and the filters, we'll be more like these carefree, beautiful mallard ducks. Once we learn how to accept ourselves again, we'll be able to appreciate Earth a little bit. We love the Earth, it's our planet, it's our home. We've gotten fixed on what we all have to do to help our home. I hope everyone finds the happiness those mallard ducks seem to have one day. Thank you, Dr. Sperr, for this experience. So I wanted to share that with you. It's one of the most rewarding things I get as being a professor at this college. And I'd put our students off against any student at any college or university.
These are copies for us to take in the front there?
Yes. Those are, yes. Thank you.
Congratulations.
That's great. I was looking for mallard ducks to tell you.
I didn't like the flock.
No, seriously, I got to see these barn-inspired ducks.
So, you know what those mallard ducks had? They did have to do a 300-word essay. The next Finance Capital Committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June 11, 2019, at 5:00 p.m., followed by the full board meeting. The board will open the public session between 6:15 and 6:30, and an absumed public session will process this. processed after 3:00 p.m. I request a motion to adjourn the meeting to a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries. Meeting closes at exactly 7:00 p.m.